His meeting has been properly posted as a normal voting places. I'll make a motion.
A second?
Do you have a motion and a second? All in favor then say aye.
Aye.
Call at the same time. Motion's carried. We're on to student showcase. Are they gonna do it right there, should we stay here, or?
It's up to you, are you able to leave from there, or?
Yeah, I think that works.
Well, thank you so much for having us. It's our first year for our Lego Robotics elective, so it's been a lot of troubleshooting, a lot of problem solving, but it's so awesome because the kids have truly taken so much ownership of it and it's been very exciting to see how it's really coming together. So, I taught Lego Robotics previously for about five years at a different school, so coming in with the knowledge of what I had learned versus these new bots, it's just the technology has changed so much that I have also learned a lot too because of them. So, I don't know who's in charge of that. Thanks, Mr. Poseck.
There you go.
So, basically, our mission for this elective was just to really spark their curiosity in sort of a different way, integrating the building, the programming, the teamwork aspects into our elective. It's using the new EV3 Lego Mindstorms kits, which is the newest technology out there, so we're very lucky to have it, so thank you. They have independently programmed their robots to be autonomous, meaning that they just move on their own. So, they have been able to learn the programming, learning the different components of it, and using tutorials and things like that on the Lego website to problem solve and do their different challenges. I don't know what the key to what this is, Mr. Poseck.
Just point at me.
Okay. We've been focusing on the four Cs as well, which I know the primary building has been focusing on too. So, working on the communication piece, not only amongst themselves, but their final presentation this week, communicating with me what they have learned. Collaborating, obviously, a brand-new unit, a brand-new elective, brings about a lot of collaboration, so it's been pretty cool to watch that kind of come to life. Obviously, creativity, it's like all about that, and innovation. So, it's been really great seeing how they've been connecting these real-world problems with their programming and how they've been innovative about that and obviously tying in critical thinking. So, those four Cs are kind of what I'm also valuing them on with their final project, too.
Thank you for pointing.
Welcome. Our kids, they're pretty intricate, there's a lot to them. So, the brain is kind of, you'll see when the guys show you their models, is truly the, I mean, the core of the box. So, it's what the programs are downloaded onto, it's manipulating through the programs. There's all different kinds of sensors, so I had everybody use one sensor for sure, so I knew that they knew how to use it, and then I kind of opened it up for them to try out new sensors. There's a touch sensor, there's light sensor, ultrasonic sensors. There's a lot of different pieces to that. Learning how the motors and wires talk to each other and how they work, and then a ton of pieces, too, that they've all created the same robot, but now they're adding on different attachments for their programs and how those attachments actually help with their designs. If you want to click on, Mr. Poseck, those are links for the different challenges. So, our first challenge was, they actually picked a real-world topic. So, there was manufacturing, there was the healthcare industry, there was education, communication. So, they picked a real-world topic, and then they had to research an autonomous robot that has already been helping in that area, basically just to get some background knowledge of what's already out there. Because to give them a Lego robot is one thing, but what has already been created. So, this group in particular looked at a bricklaying robot, it's called Sam. It weighs 1,500 bricks a day on its own. So, just showing how it can be innovative and help the construction kind of community, which is awesome. On top of that, I also had them think of, okay, here's what's my creative. What is a modification that you can make to that robot to make it more innovative? Thinking real-world. This one is a transportation robot. So, we talked about those self-driving cars that Google has that maybe aren't as reliable yet as they could be. But this is a transportation robot as well. So, this one is awesome, she talked about the specific features of it, too, and how it's beneficial and what she would change to make it more spacious for more than just one person. And the last one is a communication one that is used in daycares and also in nursing homes. And they wanted to change it so it can speak different languages as well, so more of bilingual robot, which I thought was pretty cool. So, their final challenge now that they're working on, which are the programs that the guys are gonna show you, so I stop talking, is they're taking that real-world topic that they initially chose, and now they're programming their robots that they created to actually perform some sort of a challenge for that real-world idea. So, there's NASA, I think, Landon, you guys have NASA, correct?
Yep.
So, he'll kind of talk about the programs that they're creating for NASA. And then you guys have, is it manufact-
Uh, no, it's a feeding robot, I think it was.
What is it?
A feeding robot.
Oh, got it, yes, yes, yes. Okay, cool. So, they're gonna talk about, oh, here's the example of what the programming kind of looks like, too. So, they piece together different sections for coding their bots and then download it. And yeah, I think you guys are on text, so who wants to go first? No pressure.
Come on, Landon, you go first.
Okay, so, my robot, we got NASA. And so, we wanted to design, or we wanted to make it so this, it can like find rocks. So, they wanna pick it up and bring it back. And then, this, once this gets to wherever it's going, it can drive around, and then this is like a little bugy and it can launch it when this goes. And some of the programs we have.
How did you guys make your robot more innovative from the initial design? Because you guys changed your design of your robot, right? So, what did you change about your robot from the first build?
Instead of the sensor, or we changed the wheels. They used to be these, and now they're treads. And we moved the sensor from down here to up here. And we took out a sensor from under here and added this.
How do you think their treads have been more beneficial for your challenge?
Um, easier to get out of than if they got stuck.
Nice, thanks, Landon. Don, you wanna talk about yours?
Um, so the work we did was to help with people with feeding problems. So, we can make it like move forward. And then the things that we changed about it were that we also put tank treads on it to kind of like get over like bumpy floorboards, floorboards with nails on them. And then we also put this spare wheel in the back, which is completely like, please look up the normal.
Something we can change, right? How was it actually good to deliver, so if it's for helping?
Um, so we could deliver by bringing the arm down and then like moving like bottles or something like across a table, and then the person would like reach for it.
What has been your favorite part, favorite part about robotics this year, you guys?
I would not.
I'd say that the thing would be just kind of like program in the robots in general and just getting them like playing with the different mechanisms that they can do.
Awesome.
Um, my favorite part was actually building the robot.
So, before this PTO's class, have you had any experience with robots, or?
Uh, yes, I was last year fifth grade, did something like this.
Okay, Tom, what about you?
Uh, yeah.
Other than, uh, fifth grade, yeah. Other than what you've done at school, anything else outside of school for robotics or anything?
Um, no.
Nope?
No.
Awesome. If you had to take the elective, would you do it?
Yeah.
Thank God, it's just a good guy, they have it doing it, yes.
If you were required to take it, would you do it?
Yeah.
Oh, great, we have that back. Excellent, anything else, you guys? Okay, great. Thank you.
Got one for you guys. We've got something for you, Landon and Donovan. Thank you, very nice job. Very, very nice job. And Ms. Pito, we have a meeting.
Oh, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you so much.
Thanks, girls. Thank you. Thank you very much for coming.
Okay, we are on to the approval of amendments. We've got Monday, October 24th.
Make a motion to a quick minutes on Monday, September 24th. A second?
Okay, a motion and a second. Are there any additions, corrections? All in favor then say aye.
Aye.
Call at the same time. Motion's carried. We've got the financial report and bill of business.
Okay, the voucher listing for September 19th through October 23rd, 2018, the general plan, okay, well, checks number, check number 553710 for $153.05. Next, check number 553711 for $73.08. Next, check number 553712 for $83.01. Next, direct deposit numbers 900047569 through 900047679 for $153,049.8. Next, direct deposit numbers 900047680 through 900047786 for $143,157.05. Next, direct deposit numbers 900047787 through 900047891 for $150,683.71. Next, wire transfers for payroll liabilities, wires numbers 201800056 through 201800108 for $387,753.97. For a total payroll of $834,964.38. Next, we have accounts payable. Checks numbers 53203 through 5327, excuse me, 53267 for $178,851.51. Next, AP wire transfers 201800079 through 201800098 for $12,015.45. Next, credit card transaction number 920 for $29,660.25. And then credit card transaction 9212018 for $1,479.82. Next, the ACH direct deposit numbers 181900054 through 181900070 for $1,598.88. For total accounts payable of $223,606.1. For total disbursements of $1,058,573.9.
I'll second. Okay, we have a motion to accept the financial report. Are there any questions? Okay, all in favor then say aye.
Maybe read again, maybe. Uh, yeah, what was I saying?
All in favor then say aye.
Aye.
Call at the same time. Motion's carried. Okay, we're on to donations to be heard. No one has asked to desire to speak for the board. So, we're going to move on past that to district administrator's report. We've got, no donation?
We have one donation, yep. Would like to, okay, to a motion for to accept Sherri McRae. Thank you very, very much for donating a very nice Lego storage container for the primary maker space room, so that's our donation.
Okay, we have a motion to accept that.
Motion to accept the donation.
A second?
A motion and a second. Discussion? All in favor then say aye.
Aye.
Call at the same time. Motion's carried. Personal action?
Yep, we have two. Would like to present and thank Garrett Schmidt for his efforts at the student discoteum over the past several months. And then to replace Garrett, we're gonna be trying something a little different, trying to do a job share between Eric Opperman and Brady Ross. So, those two gentlemen have been interviewed through our maintenance department and are being recommended to be moved forward to the board. So, just looking for two motions, one to approve the resignation of Garrett Schmidt as presented, and the second to make a motion to approve the letters of appointment of Eric Opperman and Brady Ross as presented.
Make a motion to accept the letter of resignation of Garrett Schmidt.
I'll second. Okay, we have a motion and a second. Discussion? All in favor then say aye.
Aye.
Call at the same time. Motion's carried.
I'll make a motion to approve the letters of appointment for Eric Opperman and Brady Ross as presented.
Second?
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor then say aye.
Aye.
Call at the same time. Motion's carried. Information?
Okay, we are, believe it or not, this week, at the end of this week, represent about the end of nine weeks. Our first quarter is completed. As we look forward to November, obviously, we've got a lot of large school events, teacher conferences, Veterans Day, holiday concerts, and things like that. So, it'll be a very, very busy next couple of months. But things are moving forward, and it's moving well, so that's all I've got.
Okay, we are on to the reports, committee reports. You have finance committee?
Thank you. This month, we had a nice long meeting. There are a lot of great variables to talk about. So, to summarize it, really, we went over those three remaining points that are contained in the memo that was sent to finance committee and also shared with the board. And those are the three variables that would make up our revenue limit worksheet. So, we discussed the student membership count that came in in September, the third Friday in September. And our membership is still declining, but it did come in a little bit higher than I had projected at 776 stuff to ease. The second item is our property values, and that one came in as an increase of 5.51% over the last school year. And that was pretty close to the projections that we had, and we knew it was gonna be a little bit above the state average. And then the last big item was the equalization aid that we received from the state. And so, we talked about that. It's created through formulas within the state, and there was more equalization aid in the state budget this year than in the past. So, actually, we received a little bit more state aid. First time that that's happened in over six years. So, it was a, it was a nice thing for us, or for our taxpayers, really, because that decreases the amount that they owe. So, then we talked about really the result when you put those three items into the revenue limit worksheet, it gives us our final levy. And we discussed how the levy is actually dropping down to $4.58 based on the revenue limit worksheet. So, I just wanted to just do the final summary comparison with our decreasing property values, declining membership, and increase in state aid. From last year, our levy was set at $5.42. As I mentioned, it's dropping down to $4.58. That's actually dropped in 84 cents total. And what that means is about a $300,000 home will see a decrease of about $250 from last year. So, it's going in a very nice direction for this district. It's a good place to live. So, that summarizes it, but during the meeting, we also, we, it was mentioned in the annual budget meeting that the finance committee would like to kind of compare from the preliminary revenue limit worksheet and walk through it to see the final ending one. So, we did that, we walked through some of the variables, and we discussed that information and how we actually obtained the revenue limit. We talked a little bit about the equalization aid side of things and how the state determines those numbers, walked through some scenarios with that and comparisons from the final year, or from the last two years. And then lastly, we really went over the quarterly reports. So, that would be our revenue and expenses for this year so far, July through September. And we are, overall, we looked through all the lines, but we're really looking right on track, it's well put together. So, very comfortable with all of our numbers here. But we did also discuss that just the week before DPI issued some new coding for our accounts, so it's gonna be changing. So, yeah, it's, you know, it's happening now, where you're already, you know, partway into the year. So, we'll just keep communicating, I'll share definitely where those changes, what they're affecting, and we'll try to track those easy going forward. That was essentially the meeting. You guys have anything else to add?
No, that's pretty much it. It was mostly you answering my silly questions.
My questions, your projections, your bear models.
Yeah, I'm projecting, how we come up with those using the bear model, there was a lot of good information.
Okay, we're then on to, principal's report, updates.
How we doing tonight?
You guys doing well?
Sure, you can take a look, there's some nice pictures up here, Mike and I are gonna share with you. So, I decided I was gonna put a lot of pictures, so I did it, too. So, there won't be as much words on the screen, but that's all right. So, I like to travel around the school, take picture of what's going on in the classroom. So, in science here, on the left-hand side is some of our fifth graders doing experiments on the first day. In the middle, on the bottom, is our sixth graders are actually putting together a prosthetic device for students with cerebral palsy, so they have to do the, all of the research about cerebral palsy, and they're putting together their own little prosthetic there. And then the top one is when Mr. Wagner likes to talk about different sorts of chemical reactions that occur, and this one cannot be done in the school. So, I was invited to go outside. All the kids are wearing goggles, I promise you. If you notice, our back parking lot, there's occasionally, there are some petitions there so that people can't drive in, which has been very helpful for students not getting hit by cars. But Mr. Wagner's foot is on the right-hand side in the middle as he runs away because it was sulfur reacting with water, which was, it was explosive. It was really good. Some social studies things. Our seventh, eighth grade has a new social studies curriculum, and they're working on some, we're gonna do some research on our state representatives. And then down the bottom, Biz Town is where our fifth graders are doing right now, and they are actually going on their field trip on Wednesday. So, they're going the whole day on Halloween, and they are going to be dressed in costume, but it'll be dressed as workers at the different locations where they happen to have jobs. And then in our math curriculum, there's some students on the left doing some measurement stuff, they do what we call math-science together, initially with our seventh, eighth graders, working on some measurement things. In the upper-right hand corner are some sixth graders working together on math. And our math teachers in both buildings have been putting up these posters so the kids actually know what they're learning about in each one of the topics, in each one of the units. So, when Mike and I happen to go in classrooms, we're able to actually look for that, and we'll be able to ask kids, so which one of these topics are you working on today? So, we can have some good conversations that way. In language arts, I just like watching kids read. So, this is a picture, and you can see on the left, they're not, there's two separate classrooms, left and right there, but they, kids read everywhere and anywhere. It's the best thing in the whole world. And then on the bottom, that picture was actually taken in Megan Hess's classroom. So, on the top, two rows, those are seventh-grade essential outcomes, the bottom two rows are eighth-grade essential outcomes. So, when I walk into a classroom, I come up, the items that are started are the ones that those students are working on in that particular classroom at the time. And then in Spanish class, the bottom one, our seventh graders just learning how to do Spanish and telling time is one of their first units, so they all have actual clocks, not like the ones on your wrist, the digital ones now. They actually have to learn how to tell times in Spanish. In the upper-left-hand corner happens to be a student presentation. They also learn about cultural aspects of different Spanish-speaking countries. In the upper-right-hand corner, there was actually a relay race as they were conjugating verbs. So, they had four students, six, no, five students together. They don't do the volsultrus one when they do conjugation. So, they did actual, you know, we're gonna have a race, and it was exciting. I'm telling you, the kids had a great time with that. FIAID class, we use this room, there's circuitry that was going on in fifth and sixth grade in here. On the upper-right-hand corner, we have a great archery program, but actually, we're doing in fifth and sixth grade is one of the electives as well. So, Mr. Pomeroy and Mr. Hanneren had worked together, and a couple of times, there were over 50 kids shooting bows and arrows on our property. All very safely done, the kids do a great job, and the rules are there. And then down the bottom, lacrosse seems to be one of our new exciting sports that our kids are really getting into. And then here's just some electives, upper left is Mr. Jupp and his band, one of his band classes is Mr. Waring, the lower left. And then we have our art class, and then Palate Project up in the upper-right-hand corner. So, just offering some kids some cool stuff there. Now, now's your turn.
We're not as cool. Yes. But, we're cool. No, it's the level of activities. Makerspace is a real highlight in our school, and I'm sure Mr. Sutter is really thrilled about that shot I took. I'm just showing the involvement of teachers during Makerspace time. Our teachers are in with Karin Meiser, and they're, they're working on cleaning up and making sure all the Lego pieces are accounted for. And Karin Meiser did a great job presenting that to kick off the class when I was in there earlier, the presentation. And beside it is a picture of the trays where the materials are from. And there, I think one of the key parts of this is kids learning organizational skills, that they, there's a diagram of where the parts go, and then they have to replace the parts to those compartments so the next kids that use it are able to have enough parts to complete the project. For those of you who have junk drawers in your homes, you know what it's like to dig in there and go, I know there's something in here, or maybe you're very organized where you know where your screwdrivers are all the time and so forth. How kids organize desks and cubbies, all those kind of executive functioning things. When I was watching this today, I was like thrilled that we're teaching kids how to do this.
There's Mrs. Meiser in action.
I thought this was a great shot, just giving you an idea of how the classroom is set up. If you haven't had a chance to come in and watch, obviously, each module that in each grade level that comes in is different, so she's gotta hustle and set up for each class that comes in. And she does it seamlessly and with energy, and Makerspace is climbing in charts as far as the favorite class for kids. Little, really big change in pace, handwriting without tears in 4K through second grade. Took some shots of some children working in their, in their handbooks, and I was noticing one thing at one, how long is looking forward, the kids are, they're grasped. And that's why we have the smaller pencils, we don't have a big, tall, long, thick pencil. We've got little golf pencils that the kids are using when they work. And those are the things I always look for, those three things. The posture of the child, the grasp on the pencil, and the tilt of their book. I'm often fascinated by lefties who are tilting it in the direction that righties are. So, I'm very sensitive to left-handed kids about, so they're set up right so they can go, because I had an uncle who wrote like this. And he was an engineer, and I just fell for the guy with, when I watched him write, so. That's one of the things I look for when I come into classrooms. Box tops, we're making a big splash this year with box tops. Couple of parents, new parents have taken over, and they, one made a frame, and I'm sorry I didn't include enough it, but the whole class of Mr. Brown's 5Kers brought in box tops, and they raised the most for the, for the month. So, I took a picture of them, and they've got a nice little banner of their classroom. So, it's, it's fun. 5K recess is, makes my day. One gorgeous day that's right near the outdoor classroom. And Mrs. Zeplos and I are outside waiting for the 5Kers to come out, and I told her, hey, it- waiting for the 5Kers to come out, and I told her, "Hey, it'd be, I'm just gonna wait to see what the kids do." And they came out, they got in those leaves, and it was just, it was so much fun. So I threw that in there to say, "Kids haven't changed that much."
Neither have you.
Food drive's big, it's the annual food drive and it's, it's always something that we point to as a source of pride and that kids really rally around and families rally around. We're doing a little bit for pennies, nickels, dimes, and quarters for, as a kickoff to our book fair. And some of you may have gotten a late notice from me, I said about 8:30 saying, "Hey, by the way, send in pennies, over $1,200 worth of pennies today." We're gonna help a couple of school districts in, near the Kickboob River Valley that got hit pretty hard with damage to, to books and so forth, and the money's gonna go to them, I know the three principals there, and they, and it's a depressed area with that, so we're gonna help them getting books for those kids. But the food drive goes right along with that.
Like is that in Florida or in North Carolina?
That is in Wisconsin.
Oh, Kickboob, Kickboob.
Reesburg and Lefarge, if you've ever been, if you ever go through Reesburg Highway 33 and head up into that driftless area, they didn't need flooding. All, all three districts, all two districts started school a week late because they just couldn't, the towns were divided, they couldn't have access to things, and a lot of farmland out there, and so I thought it was a perfect time to do that.
And the last picture up here, it just happens to be, I can't believe that somebody took a picture on the bus, Ron, but this was on Friday, the 19th. We had other pictures that I could've put up in here, Ron, and I chose this one instead because there may have been one that had you with a sombrero, that, we'll just leave that for a later time. But the staff was completely and totally surprised, amazed, dumbfounded on that Friday when we had a tremendous amount of parent volunteers, thank you so much to the parents, and all the kids did a really good job while they were here and while they were at the primary school, and the teachers just had a great time being able to sit down and have some lunch, so thanks to Stephanie and Barb and Melissa and, I don't wanna forget everybody's name, but there was, there were a number of people that stayed behind us that we made, Gail was back, Cindy was back, and then some instructional assistants that we needed to stay back, but it was just an awesome experience and they just had a great time, and the only thing I was worried about was rain during recess, and it rained just a little bit during 5th and 6th grade recess, but not enough to have us come inside, but the kids were just awesome, and their, their only question was, "Is everything okay with the teachers?" And when Mike and I said to our, to our students, "Yeah, we just told them to go out for lunch and they, they'll be back at 1 o'clock, don't worry about them, they'll be fine." So that was, that was pretty cool.
4K says, first time, Catherine Manis said, "First time I ever sat down with my co-teacher and all the A's at one time, and we had that time together."
So it was really cool, very much appreciated by all, so thank you, thank you, thank you. That's it, that was the last line.
Ooh.
Almost Halloween.
John Keynes knows how to work those things.
Yeah.
Okay, we're on old business, and we've got the 2019-20 school year calendar.
Sure, just wanted to present a proposal, obviously, in November typically we, we put forward a final school's calendar. And in this upcoming year, the difference is basically when we take a look at it is as per doubt, if we wanted to completely be finished on that traditional date like we've done in the past, which would be the first Friday, we would be reducing one instructional day from 177 to 176. Minute-wise, we're just fine, and actually in this proposal, we would get the board to decide whatever we feel to be as best. But another difference here is there's typically two half-day grading days that happen in trimester one and trimester three, our trimester one and trimester two, and those happen to be full days. We would compensate the teachers as a contracted day, they just wouldn't have release time, so that time would be outside of their day, contracted hourly days. So, so basically then we would be at the same number of instructional minutes as we've done before in the past with that too. So you can see where we tried to mirror Arrowhead as much as possible in the past, we have, you can see Arrowhead is moving towards basically ending the second week in June. The Corolline Theater schools are looking at either ending at June 9th or June 10th, we would be, the only theater school that would be ending on that Friday.
You, sorry, you said this calendar is the same number of minutes?
Same number of minutes as we had last year.
Yep. Because we had last year.
This past year, correct.
Yep. This year we have more minutes than last year?
I shouldn't say this year, this is like, this is last year, if we're looking at next year.
The calendar you're proposing is the same as this year?
Same number of minutes as the 18-19 school year.
Okay.
Correct. Yep, with one last day, because we took two of our half-days.
Two half-days.
From a minute standpoint. From a instructional minute standpoint too, we could probably have about three or four snow days as well, so there's plenty of buffer in there. You'll see Arrowhead goes several more days than we do because they have a shorter day, they also have early release Wednesdays and things like that too as well, so. You'll see the, probably the biggest change from the Arrowhead standpoint is if you take a look at February 17th, they would be having school on the 17th, or no school, and we would be having school on the 17th of February. This current year, we have a three-day weekend instead of the four-day weekend too as well, so it'd be basically mirroring what we do this year. So, any thoughts in November, typically is when we do finalize it, Arrowhead will finalize schedule two as well, but just wanted to put that forward for discussion or for some thought as next month we'll bring it forward for a finalization.
So can you explain a little more the half-days that are gonna be removed?
Sure, sure. The half-days that would be removed, we wanted to take a look at minutes again, we have plenty of minutes to play with. Right now, say, it's, at the end of trimester one, there is a half-day grading day, so our students go home at noon, and the teachers then would spend the last half of the day grading, okay? It's built into their contract, it's built into their, their time, their, their time of school.
What do you mean by it's built into their contract?
Built into their contract is it's considered a contractual day, that half-time. So when the students leave at noon, they can go wherever they want to, it's, we don't keep them on campus, some stay and some don't. Basically from noon until 4, it is compensated grading time, okay? And we have another one of those at the end of trimester two, okay? So we would not remove that, it just would be, basically the time is no longer between noon and 4, they would have to make up that time outside of the school day.
So then they wouldn't be compensated?
They wouldn't be compensated, it's one of their 192, 195 days of contracted work.
Effectively, the children are at school fewer days in this proposal, but the teachers have the same number of contracted days.
But if you're, same number of contracted days, but you're taking away the two half-work days, which are con, half-contracted days or full contracted days, you're not adding in a grading day anywhere.
They're getting paid to do work, but they have to do it at night or on the weekend.
Do it outside of.
Is effectively what happens.
Because right now there's 177 school days, next year there will be 176 school days, that extra day for teachers would be a grading day.
Or together at the end or beginning of the year, or whatever they, okay? And it would be used as a PD day?
Nope, 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 it's just, it's a day that's considered grading. Correct. Yep.
But not used for grading because it's not during the time when they actually need it?
It's not between noon and 4.
Well, they can, they can do that anytime they want.
Yes, because they have no lives outside of the school building.
Well, because no one else in the professional world works outside of business hours either, so who, like what? I mean, sometimes there are things you have to do outside of May 5th.
Yes, very often, something we could have a conversation with.
They're being compensated for it.
It's, it's basically up to, I was just looking at kind of keeping our instructional minutes the same as we've done before in the past as well.
So what, so, in theory, we are trying to be better and learn more and increase our ratings amongst the theater schools and all of these things, that theoretically, having more time would be more beneficial than having less time, in terms of our, you know, teachers and for the students' time, right? So if we can add time, what's the argument for not doing that?
The argument for not doing it is teachers would be able to accomplish their grading during the four hours, but most, most, most of our teachers...
I'm not saying take the grading day away.
Right.
I'm saying why are we, if everyone else is going to school another two days or whatever and getting more days and more minutes, theoretically that allows them to accomplish more things in a year.
They may have some other days off throughout, throughout the year too as well, several more half-days as well, I know some schools and districts have set half-days like the last Wednesday of the month. Some of them are not going to school on February 17th and things too, so our 176 days is very comparable to the other school districts probably going 177 or 178.
Well, and we're one of the highest of the theater schools in instructional minutes.
Correct. Yep, yeah, we have the most instructional minutes.
So then we're already...
We do, we have, and most of this...
Well, we're doing more minutes but performing lower.
Not in all areas, in some, we're not number one in, on the forward, we're not number one in all the categories, we're not. But from a minute standpoint, the reason why we can stop at 176 school days is because we have a much longer school day than they do. There are certain school districts that'll say, "We have to go two more days" because of, because of all the other disruptions to their school's calendar, whether it's regular half-days, more PD days, whatever might be there too as well. So from a minute standpoint, we are, we probably, again, I don't have that in front of me, but we probably are top one or two, if the hype can't manage us not being the top instructional minutes.
Is there a correlation between number of PD slash grading day things throughout the year and employee satisfaction?
No, but I know we're one of the only school districts, I don't have that information, but we're one of the only school districts around that release teachers for grading. And this would be a, a day that would be outside of the eight-hour day. The majority of our staff has their grades done prior to noon of the half-day, the vast majority, though I'm gonna tell you that grades are submitted, they've already done the four hours outside of their day, that's why we don't require them on campus, that is a big morale perk, a big perk, a huge perk. And if it's something that we want to stay in, we certainly, we certainly can, we would just be short one more instructional day, which from the DPI, we certainly can because we've got some, some wiggle room there as well.
I would guess that it's also a perk to get done Friday versus coming into another weekend in September.
Yeah, nobody's gonna be, I think that'll be, that'll be really well received.
Yeah.
I think so. And our staff, Jennifer, to your point, they're not gonna have to come back in the staff calendar that following week at all. They will be done on that Friday. Yeah, unless there's some unreasonable amount of snow days, that would require all of us to come on back.
So essentially they're getting paid for that full grading day but not having to be in a building to do it?
Correct, correct.
And it's not, so if, the teacher's contracted years, how many days?
195 days.
195 days.
Three holidays.
Would, is the 195 days, is it three holidays?
Yes, so it's 192.
So that's 192. So that means it's actually 191 in the building with responsibilities then, and that 192nd day is just paid.
Paid, correct. You would assign it on the staff calendar, whether it's January 2nd, you could assign it anywhere, correct. But they would be compensated, we're not taking it away. It's one less day they have to come on to campus. The other day they don't even come on to campus, is our Mustang Day. Correct.
So that this will be approved or disapproved?
Do you, do you want me to go and, and talk to some, some staff members, do you want me to hold them? I mean, ultimately, it'd be one less instructional day, and that's where, I'm just trying to get as close as we can to what we've done before in the past.
I think in the attempts of trying to keep morale at least where it's at and not lower, it would be nice to talk to the staff and get a feeling of what they would prefer. Not that that's what we would go with, but understanding where they're coming from is important.
I can do that, I can do it, would you like it to be formally done? Okay. Because then we would have, if we take those two half-days, the minutes would be, basically would go from, to 175, yeah, so it's at 176, 50 days. Okay, I can put a survey out.
Thank you. I also have the explanation that a lot of this is also being done in effect to not come back for two days in June, like we would end on a Friday, so it's not the appearance that we're just voting to remove half-days. That appears, it's a bigger picture.
Okay, because those two aren't conclusive together though.
I understand that.
But I can, I'll explain it to them, when I kick it out to them, I'll explain what we're really trying to do.
Right.
To do that and try to maintain the number of minutes that we have, because right now we hear a lot from the standpoint of, "I need more time with kids, I need more time with kids," and that's really where, by carving out those two half-days, in theory, I haven't taken any time with kids, so that's where that, that really came from, so.
Because I think there could be a morale value piece to, to people knowing what they've done in the past, not having to go into a weekend and come back for two days.
Right.
So.
But, for sure, okay.
Okay, we are on to new business, and that's the 2018-19 district budget tax levy. Is that correct? Should that be, shouldn't that be 2019-20?
No, we're approving this year's budget.
We're finalizing this year's budget, that we started spending on July 1st, 2018.
Okay.
Yep. So basically this is a pretty formal action, requiring, ultimately, as Sherry presented to the finance committee, it is our recommendation to levy to the banks, given the three big pieces of the puzzle, the board, the administration is looking for a motion to approve the budget as presented, but in doing so, we need every one of the numbers read.
I'll make a motion to recommend to certify the tax levies of Fund 10 for $4,217,361, Fund 41 for $1,000, for a tax levy of $4,218,361. Be resolved at the property tax levy to fund the 2018-19 Merton School District operations be set at $4,218,361, and that the necessary certifications be forwarded first to the appropriate municipalities. This establishes an L rate of $4.05 per $1,000 evaluation for property tax purposes.
One second.
Okay, with a motion and a second, is there any discussion to... Okay, all in favor, then say aye.
Aye.
All at the same time, motion's carried. Okay, future meeting and agenda.
Looking ahead to November and December, we've got November 26th, which is, Thanksgiving being pretty early this year, so we can, we can get a meeting in hand for Thanksgiving, so that would be, and then the only topic that I have right now would be to finalize the calendar, if the board is willing and ready to go forward with that, so. And then December 17th, is everybody okay with that date? Gets a little crazy with the holidays there.
And we have to remember we need to do industry's evaluations.
Oh, yep, that typically happens in December.
Shouldn't, I personally schedule more time for that because we never finish it.
You want a separate date for that then?
Probably.
That attached to the...
Yeah, otherwise it'll just get too long.
Okay. Just told you on the final list.
Black screen. Why, I mean, there's still actions, the, the, the review of the papers is kind of finalized, they're just still kind of ongoing actions to the spot logs.
Right.
So, yeah, we're not complete slackers.
Would you like to set a meeting date now?
No.
I don't have my phone.
Okay.
Okay.
You do it, I do a poll.
I can be, be a poll, sure. I can do a poll. I can certainly do it. Um, would we be looking at the week before the seventeenth, like the week of the tenth and the seventeenth, or do you want to just throw out a bunch of dates in December?
Throw out dates.
Throw out dates in December, okay.
I'm glad you do, because there's a lot of things going on.
I'll draw a whole bunch of them to you.
Avoid the Christmas concert day.
Yeah.
Try not to do that day.
Pretty bad, got it.
The other agenda items? Okay.
So just for kind of a procedural clarification, if an agenda item comes up or a concern comes up between now and the next meeting, can it still go on the next meeting if it's not put on right now?
Oh, yes.
It just has to be before the meeting is posted.
Correct.
Okay. And when the meeting is posted?
Uh, Thursday before, typically, we try to do the Thursday before the meeting, uh, there has to be given twenty-four hour notice, so the latest would be Friday.
Okay.
So, yep.
But the reason for asking is if there's an item that, uh, that's pressing, we wanna go forward with it, it's always good to give everybody an opportunity.
Right. But at any time, as board members, you can say, "Ron, put this on."
Okay.
You guys have that right. Certainly do.
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
I'll second.
Put a motion and a second, all in favor, then say aye.
Aye.
All at the same time, meeting is adjourned.
See it in your eyes, you didn't want to have to ask.